Senator Connect, will you call the roll?
Dr. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Present.
Ms. McTavola?
Here.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Here.
Dr. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Rundell?
Here. Ms. Scarpelli, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting. In accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record and the Ridgewood News on September 9th, 2022. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education Office in the Administration Building on that same date. Copies of the procedures in effect for regular board meetings are available for the public at tonight's meeting. Dr. Brennan, will you read the mission statement?
Gladly. The Glen Rock School District founded on principles of education in partnership with the supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you. I do not see our student council rep. If she does come in, we'll go back to her. And just before we start, I'm sure you noticed there's an absence here. Sorry, but he had a family emergency, so he's not with us tonight, but he will be back for the next one. Mr. Escalante, you are up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. So I am the Anti-Bullying Coordinator in the district, so I'm going to present on our HIB programming that we have within the district, as well as our student safety data system entries from the end of last year. So each school has an anti-bullying specialist. We are fortunate that they all returned this year from last year, so there's no new specialist, but each school has a specialist, all the teachers are aware of who they are, and we do have an HIB page on each of the school websites that has HIB information, as well as the contact information of all the anti-bullying specialists. The specialists meet with myself at least twice a year, so we usually have one meeting in the fall, as well as another in the spring, to discuss any updates to the law, any trainings or professional development that we've had, and any trends in cases that we may have had. And like I said, we don't have any new specialists, but if we were to, they receive six-hour training through Hipster, which is our HIB module where all our investigations go through. Training for staff, so at new teacher orientation, I did train all of the new teachers on the HIB law, and there was some new updates to the law this year as well, and also the building principles, as well as we utilize faculty meetings, as well as the Safe Schools mandated training modules that we have, so that all staff are renewed every year and trained on HIB and any of the updates to the law as well. So I created that video for Safe Schools, that's been pushed out to all the staff. And of course, I do tell them myself, any of the anti-bullying specialists are always available for any questions that teachers may have on HIB. And just in a side note, not necessarily for staff, we also will be having an HIB program for parents this October. In mid-October, I thought it was very important to be as transparent as possible with the HIB law, some of the updates, because there is some misunderstanding at times between the dictionary definition of bullying and the protocols we have in place for what HIB is in schools. So I just thought this year to be a little bit more proactive with the parent community to really help them learn a little bit about the law and the protocols we have in place for schools. And that training will be done by the NJPSA Legal Representative that also trained our anti-bullying specialists last March. Each school has a school climate and safety team. The anti-bullying specialists are co-chairs of the team with the building principals, and these teams consist of some administration, a teacher representative, the ABS, and a parent. And the purpose of this team is to develop and maintain a positive school culture, and look at some of the systemic practices in the schools, and identify if there's any maybe trends of HIB, or just general climate and culture issues going on in the school. They have to meet at least twice a year. In the middle school, high school, we generally try and meet once every six weeks or so, so we meet well more than twice a year. And just note that obviously there are parents on the committee, but when we do talk about confidentiality and some HIB issues, they aren't a part of those discussions. So these HIB self-assessment grades are actually for 2020, 2021. The grades each year do lag, so we're actually a year behind. But again, that's normal protocol. And really, the most important number to look at is all the way to the right. You can see every school's around 74, 75, and the max is 78. Our policies, protocols, procedures are all very sound, which is great. But again, we're always looking into new ways to educate all stakeholders, whether it's students, teachers, or parents, like I said with the HIB Parent Night that we're doing, to just educate them on the law and the protocols that we have. This is the student safety and data system entries for just the reporting period of January 1 last year, last school year, to the end of the school year, June. And these numbers, like many New Jersey schools, are a little bit higher than we've seen in the past. But again, that is a trend that in talking with our administrators in other schools, that we have seen. However, on the positive note, number one is definitely a testament to our reporting system, whether HIB was alleged, or incidents did happen or not. Teachers, students, parents did always let administration know, because again, our number one goal as administration is making sure that all the students feel safe in the school. So again, that, and also what this did was it gave us a lot of insight into our first kind of normal opening, knock on wood, and hopefully we keep it that way. And myself and Dr. Parent in the middle school had restart meetings with each of the teams to just kind of walk them through some basic school etiquette and how our lunch works, to really make it clear to them how things work. And again, through no fault of their own, just some basic behaviors through virtual learning and COVID, we're kind of lost between the transition, the big transition of elementary to middle school. So those meetings went very well, but again, it gave us great insight into kind of how to prepare them for the year. And then the last slide here is just all the HIB trainings and programs that we have for the, from January last year to June. And again, we're very fortunate in the middle school, high school, we have the Wellness Center, we have the school counselors, they do a lot all the time. But again, our programming is very good, and once again, we're always thinking of new ways to kind of train staff and parents and the students on HIB and the HIB law that we have in place in the school.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Does anybody have any questions? Dr. Robinson?
I just wanted to say thank you for being proactive with the parents and staff, just in an effort of like the board, as well as just the district as a whole. Being transparent is definitely a top goal, and I think that this kind of communication gets ahead, and thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
To echo the transparency there, I like how you're pointing out there's a difference between a word when it's defined in its structure and how we use it outside, so that's really helpful.
Yep.
Give parents and students the understanding of how we're viewing all this, so I wish you luck on that, on that public session.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have on the agenda the school year graduation data that we need to report out to the board and to the public. You can see, looking at the title, the table that almost all of our graduates are achieving graduation through the normal NJSLA graduation tests, but we had 29 that did graduate under the substitute competency tests. Those are things, as it's defined below, PSAT, SAT, ACT, all of those kinds of things. And then there are some that are, did achieve graduation status through their individual IEPs providing them the pathway through them. You know that last year, juniors took the new test as a graduation test, and then the government decided not to count that as a graduation requirement. My daughter, who was an 11th grader last year, was super excited that she took that test, even though it's not counting. But I'm sure many others were. But anyway, you can see the numbers here, they're solid, as always. I just have a couple reports that I want to share out, and then I'll share some of the things that Dr. Charleston wanted to share with you also. Last month, when I spoke at length, I talked about the curriculum projects that we did over the summer that you approved last spring. There are a few other projects that I wanted to just touch base on, because I spoke quite a bit last time, and I wanted to break it up a little bit. And those were some of the programs that we ran over the summer that directly affected students that you approved, and I thought you might want to hear about a few of them. So the first was, as you recall, we tried something new with summer reading for the middle and school and high school. And the way we approached it was, it's been a tough year or two for you, so we don't want to make it too onerous for you. So option A is choose some pleasure reading and do that. You know, I was an English teacher, I love reading. Option B was join one of these discussion groups, these reading groups, where we tried to shift the, what does summer reading look like? And so we had 31 kids sign up for that, which I thought was a good number for the first year, so I'm hoping to grow it. There was a live event that was attended by fewer. There was a lot of great feedback from the students about what they liked. There was very much a multimedia element to these newsletters, they called it Rock Talk, and they really appreciated that. And some of the students throughout the summer didn't realize that it was going to be something multimedia and something new, so they would have signed up had they known, is what they said. They really liked the topics that were chosen. There were four different topics. One was about personal development, one was travel, one was sustainability, and then social issues. The personal development and travel were the most popular, but they all kind of really liked that idea of personal development, and they want to infuse that kind of through all of the topics next year. What they like to see more of next time, the students, a better platform for interaction through the summer, so we need to iron some of those things out. They want to see, as I said, the personal development theme woven through all the subtopics. The teachers that were involved in it just did a great job, and they were super excited about it, and they're really already thinking about what they can do next summer to make it a little bit better. And so I'm really proud of the work that they did. They curated really great materials that were friendly to a wide variety of audiences, which is what we are aiming for. The look of their newsletters was really professional, engaging. They seemed really excited about the ways the program could grow, as I said, and eager to continue working on. And it turns out, the middle school students were our most frequent flyers. They were the ones most engaged, so that's pretty neat to see. So I just thought I'd report on that. We're going to continue looking at that and find ways to get the word out more, and see how we can refine it and just kind of build that. As I explained before, I really want it to be a reading and thinking community, right? Not just read this book and do a project or something like that. So I'm hopeful that it grows, so we'll see where that comes. The next project I want to talk about, if you remember, we approved some hours for some of the middle school counselors to do some groups throughout the summer. And so I just want to talk a little bit about that. There were three groups. There was a leadership group, a social skills group, and an incoming sixth grader group. We had 17 students participate in the leadership group, six in the social skills, 34 in the incoming sixth grader group. They were well received. The kids were excited to be there. I talked with one of the counselors, and he said it was really a positive thing. And so like the leadership group, it was to promote leadership qualities among this incoming seventh and eighth grade students, and then how do we roll that throughout the year and building that leadership throughout? They taught about, you know, like current situations in their daily lives, students were considering alternative solutions to problems, you know, that kind of work is what they were working on. And they're hoping, they're planning to engage in similar leadership programming throughout the school year. The counselors look to work with these students to further their skills, use them with the district. This is what we're talking about, you know, we're talking about future leaders and building our kids' capacity. The social skills group, the goal was to provide social opportunity for students to develop and expand their friendships and social skills. They practice social skills in hypothetical situations and discuss as a group the pros and cons of each kind of style of how to solve these things, how to get into groups. At the end of the group, the students were more confident in their answers on the proper way to navigate situations socially and emotionally, were able to accurately recall these various skills, and still the students' choice for how they engage with or react to others around them. This group will ideally give them the skills to be more proactive than reactive in their relationships, which is what we'd like to see, you know, especially middle schoolers as they're trying to figure out how to navigate much more complex social situations than they did in elementary school. And then the last group I mentioned was the incoming sixth grader group, our biggest group, there were 34 students. The goal was to promote a confident transition into middle school, foster the start of new friendships outside of their elementary school friends. They became familiar with the Glen Rock Middle School, aiding in a smoother transition. They were more familiar with various locations within the building, found common problem areas less concerning. You know, lockers and locks always seem to be the one that stresses out the sixth graders, incoming sixth graders. Hallway navigation, feelings of not knowing who to turn to for help. The seventh and eighth grade student helpers were utilized during these meetings, which added to the number of familiar faces, so that when they came in the building, they knew some of it. So it was a nice, a good group for them. And then the last thing I want to talk about, you did approve some summertime for a team of staff members, teachers, counselors, administrators, to work on the Ruler trainings that they received last year in elementary. And Ruler is, it's actually an acronym for, helps us learning about the skills to create and sustain a positive emotional climate, as well as support individual development of emotion skills for students and adults. So the Ruler actually stands for recognizing, recognizing the emotions in yourself and in others, understanding the causes and consequences of emotions, labeling emotions with accurate words from a nuanced vocabulary, expressing emotions differently depending on context, situational expectations, et cetera, and regulating emotions with effective strategies and supporting. So a big part of what Ms. Gilando is very excited about with this program is having a common vocabulary to talk about emotions, and having a common vocabulary to express what you're feeling. I think that a lot of people, you know, it becomes black and white, I'm mad, unhappy, but there are nuances, and then helping people have the ability to talk about it. So just to give you a heads up of where we are, we are rolling that training out to staff members in elementary buildings this year, over the course of the 22, 23 school year, and then we'll be rolling it out to students as we go, and mostly next year. So that's the process of where we are. We're looking into something similar for the middle and high school, to really address this SEL and climate culture that we're looking at. So it's one of our goals is to look at that with our big district culture and climate goals. And that's all I have about those programs. Yeah.
I want to thank you for sharing that. It sounds like there was a lot of great things that happened this summer, and if I had to take an educated guess, I'm going to guess that next summer, the word of mouth for the students are going to increase our numbers. So it all sounds great, and I thank you for sharing.
You're welcome. I told the committee working on the summer reading, for example, if it serves 10 kids, I'm happy, right? I want to start somewhere and then move from there. And so I'm happy that it served more than that, three times as many. So, thank you, Angela.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. And then, just before we move on, Dr. Charleston had a couple comments about some things on the agenda, and I think you have something about the addendum.
Yes.
Yes. So just a couple things in the G items. The policy items are the ones we discussed last time, and made the revisions that were asked for. G5, just want to mention, this is the one that, it's the, remind me what it's called, the Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Program. So we had to submit something very similar to this last year. They only gave us the information that we needed, and Strauss ESME only gave us the information since our last board meeting, and it has to be in place by October 1st, which is why we have to suspend the bylaws to do it in one reading. And basically, it's as it was last year that if there's a declared public health emergency, or, you know, Hurricane Sandy, and we're closed for more than three days, this describes how we handle it. But we will still have regular snow days when something is closed, you know, as it has been in the past. So it's very similar to the same piece of policy that was passed last year. And then the last thing I'll say before I hand it back to you, is to just comment a little bit on the opening of school. I think it has been really quite smooth and fairly quiet. I was in the buildings, I was at Bird on the first day, I ran into Dr. Brennan. It was so nice to see happy faces, without, majority of them without masks, and teachers excited about a much more normal year. And in the building since then, it's felt that way. It's felt like we're back to something a little bit what we remember school looking like. And so it's just really, really nice to see. The conversations I've had with teachers and administrators have all just kind of been around that same thing. It's smooth. People are happy to be here. It's a good mood right now, and I hope it continues. That's all.
Yep.
I agree, definitely becoming more of a normal school year. In fact, at the middle school level, I know they've started to say like you can't eat lunch outside, and middle schoolers are now realizing what school was like before being, you know, being here before COVID, and knowing that you ate lunch in the cafeteria together. So they're learning too, all the changes that are happening, good and maybe some not so good for them. But yeah, it's great that we're getting back to that normal type of schooling. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I also feel it too. First day of school, it definitely feels like some tensions are lessening, and things are back to normal, maybe not completely, but definitely getting there. And it was really nice. I had a really great first day of school, so, not that I went, but.
Dr. Brennan?
Yeah, I just also want to thank the community for bearing through all of that, the mask-wearing, the online stuff, everything like that, so that we can have a year like this, right? Imagine if everybody just didn't, or refused, or didn't wear the masks, and people chose not to get vaccinated, and all of those things. And then we would probably be still stuck here in the problem. So I want to thank the community for working together to keep everybody safe, so that we can, we can have a nice opening to a school and make it sound like, you know, make it like it was.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about G11?
Real quick on the general resolutions, there is an addendum to this evening's board meeting, and that's Addendum G11. And that's in relation to the Hamilton School Edition Project, and there'll be a need for special inspections and material testing services. So I solicited various quotes, and the recommendation is to go to Atlantic Engineering Laboratories. So that's Addendum G11 for this evening.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we'll open up public comment. This public comment is agenda items only, so that is if we are voting on it tonight, feel free to come up, state your name, your address, you'll have three minutes to speak. But if it's not on the agenda, and we are not voting on it tonight, just you can wait and speak after there's another public comment. So I will open up public comment at 8:02.
I think this is always the agenda. My name is Carol Garofalo, 140 Midwood.
Is this on the agenda? Like, are we voting on it tonight?
I don't know if you're voting on it.
That's, so if not, then you can speak after.
Are you voting on the opt-in, opt-out, or any?
No, we've already done that.
And the sexual ed?
Already done. Thank you. You can still speak after, yes, but it's been voted. All right. Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment at 8:03. Oh, come on. Is this, so these are agenda items only? Otherwise, we have another public comment after. It's not going to be long. All right. So 8:03, we'll still close it. All right. So brings us to general resolutions. Can I get a motion to discuss G1 through G11? Dr. Pucci Bender? Seconded by Dr. Hayward, sorry, I just upgraded you, Mr. Hayward. Of course. Does anyone have anything on the G items? Seeing none?
Dr. Brennan?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
G11, I'm just glad to see that there's progress moving forward with the Hamilton Project. The beginning of school was as eventless as it could be, lots of presents, and that made everything start off really well. So thank you for continuously supervising and refining the processes as we go along.
Thank you. Yep.
I just want to point out, G2 and G3, those are the board goals that we're approving and the district goals. So I'm eager to get those started and approved, even though the school year has just begun, but getting it underway for the district to move forward and plan accordingly.
All right. Now seen.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McTavola?
Yes.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. Can I get a motion to discuss B1 through B3? Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Scarpelli. Does anyone have anything to discuss on the B items?
Should it, one question is, oh, I may be skipping the wrong section about the mentor mentee. Is that in?
That I think is in P.
Oh, sorry. No, then I hold my question.
I have something. P11, I want to thank.
We're still on the Bs.
Oh, Bs.
Boring Bs.
I know. All right. Seen none.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McTavola?
Yes.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. Now, can I get a motion for P1 through P23? Ms. Scarpelli, seconded by Ms. McTavola. Right. Mr. Corey?
Thank you. Mentor mentees are fantastic. I hope nobody feels obligated to only take their assigned mentor as their mentor. Is there a dollar figure assigned to this amount, to P11?
Do you want to answer that, Mr. Brennan?
The mentor fee for traditional route students who have a CEAS is $550, and I don't remember what it is for alternate route, but it's defined by the state.
I imagine it was standardized, I just didn't see.
It is.
Thank you.
P11, I just want to thank the mentors that have stepped up to want to do this. I think it's just absolutely a fantastic opportunity. It makes, as a mentor, it makes you feel great. It's gratifying to see growth. And again, just thanking those that are on here. I'm sure there's a lot of others that would like to do it, but I think this is awesome.
Yes. Ms. Scarpelli?
I just want to point out with this, the mentor fee, that's typically paid by the mentee, but we as a district are paying that for them on their behalf, so that mentees are not having that come out of their paycheck. So I think that's a great thing for the district to do, to support and realize the value of that. And I know that's, you know, for the young teachers, that really is a large amount to come out of their paycheck, so, but I'd highlight that.
Thank you, Ms. Scarpelli.
Scarpelli, that I want to just add to what you're saying. I think, I did not realize that until you're bringing it forward.
that until you're bringing it forward. And that's really a great thing that the Board of Ed Administration does for our new teachers. So whoever put that in to their contract, I think, did a nice job.
Yeah, I think we did it last year. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was last year.
First year was that? Yep. And, but I agree, it makes things a lot cleaner.
I believe Dr. Charleston recommended that.
Yes.
For us to do for.
All right. Any other P discussions? All right. Seen none.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McNabola?
Yes.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. Do we have any old business? We've been here a lot, so probably not, right?
Maybe the.
That's new. All right. So we'll move to new business. Mike, did you want to talk about Atlantic City?
Yes. New Jersey School Boards Conference, Fall Conference down in Atlantic City is coming in October. It's running from October 24, 24th through, I believe, the 26th. My administrative assistant, Colleen, sent out an email to everyone, just a reminder that by October 5th, you need to let Colleen know whether or not you're going to be attending. Out of the chute, what we do is we book and assume all nine board members are going in addition to administrators. And that's only to reserve the rooms, but once you notify Colleen and myself, no later than October 5th, if you're not going, we simply cancel your reservation. So just a reminder about that. And then I think we're going to try to arrange for some sort of board dinner one evening down there. More to come on that.
Can you send it by DoorDash to my house?
Remember those strict compliances with state travel regulations and per diem rates for meals and incidentals. So the majority of the board dinner will be on each and everyone's dime, their own personal dime.
That is true. We each pay our own way for the dinner. So we do not, that is not paid by the taxpayers. It does not come out of the budget at all.
Don't come for the food.
We pay for that ourselves. Yes, make that clear.
There was an email with the schedule, so if you wanted to go through and start looking.
Yeah, that email that Sinead is referencing was sent out by Colleen on Wednesday, August 24th at 10:56 a.m.
You will be missed, Marona.
Yes.
Excuse me, 10:50.
All right. And our next meeting will be a committee of the whole on October 3rd. At this point, I will open up public comments 2 at 8:11. Mm-hmm. For any issue that you have. Just please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Orly Goldfeld, 72 Delmar Avenue.
I'm Eureka Bertram, 136 Harding Road.
Do you want to?
We just came from the Glen Rock Band Parents Association meeting. We are an organization that supports the instrumental music program. It's a parent-run organization. We mainly do a little bit of fundraising. We do some, we help out fitting uniforms, making sure that the kids are fed, all that stuff. We had a successful band camp, and as you saw at our first home football game, our marching band is doing great. Now, we have a slight problem, though. I always come here and I feel like I'm always asking for things, but I wanted you to be aware of our singular color guard. She is an eighth grader, and I find it extremely brave that she is all by herself working that flag. And in order to grow that program as part of our marching band and to do our field shows, we need an instructor. And I believe the request has been put in, but so far we have no takers. And we can't quite recruit a lot of kids knowing that we don't have an instructor. So we're kind of going in that circle. And as you know, I've asked about the music teacher. It was the same thing with orchestra. If you don't have a teacher, kids are not going to sign up. If you have, nobody signed up, we can't get a teacher. So here we are, yet again, I'm asking for a little bit of support, trying to find an instructor and trying to recruit more kids into the color guards so that the band looks great, but we also want more color guards so that we can support the football team, we can be kind of united with the school spirit and all that. So that's my ask. And if there's any one of you who know somebody who might want to do it as a volunteer or something, that would be great.
And I'll just add, first of all, a thank you to whomever posted the marching band's halftime show on social media. It's great to support the band. They are small but mighty. And who doesn't want to wear a sparkly uniform on a field? Right. And they get to swing a flag around. I mean, that, it's a lot, it's a lot of fun. It does raise a lot of school spirit. It makes the band look great and bigger because there's a big flag swirling. So we hope that we can have your support, whether it's finding a volunteer or offering a stipend for someone to come in and help the color guard program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Greg, maybe you'll know the answer to this. Traditionally, it's always. Can we just wait until after public comment? Thank you.
My name is Carol Garofalo, 140 Midwood Road. I believe the radical new health and sex ed curriculum that you have unanimously approved both negates the biblical worldview of our founders and tramples on parental rights by presenting elements you may call age-appropriate but with which many parents would disagree. And yet, most parents still hesitate to speak out publicly for fear of retribution against their children. You say you have provided an opportunity for parents to opt out their children of certain classes, but in many ways, opting out would stigmatize these children among their peers as either babyish or not woke enough. Perhaps the better way to handle the situation, and one where no child would be so stigmatized or mocked, would be to require opt-in parental permission for the classes that would be dealing with these radical sexual issues. This way, the parents who approve of their children receiving such radical information at this time and from the school can give their permission. And the parents who do not approve will still be able to continue covering these subjects at home at times they consider age-appropriate. You are all adults, and as adults, you may believe what you want and live the lifestyle of your own choosing. You may also raise your own children according to your value system, but when you deny other parents the right to do the same, it's just plain wrong. Let those parents guide their own children through these issues according to their own principles and at times they consider age-appropriate. I suggest you join the number of school systems and county boards in New Jersey who have pushed back against the 2020 New Jersey state mandates because of parental concern and even outrage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't think we have any more. Close public comment at 8:16.
Dr. Pucci Bender? Okay. To the two moms in the back, I just wanted to say that, thank you for coming tonight because my most memorable moments in high school were when I was part of the color guard. And I watched the video and I was, I was the rifle twirler, yes, but I was not, I'm not good at instructing right now because I'm here. I just think that we really have to push for that, to get those kids to come out banned. You know, not everyone is sports athletics, right? So I know I told my kids that when they were in school, they were not going to major in 101 Rock Road. They would be doing something every day after school. And I didn't care whether it was sports, drama, you know, band, whatever. They need to be involved. And I think that is just such an amazing, and I have to give a shout out to Mr. Seoski, who was here back then, the grand poobah that he was. So I think that those students that are, that have parents right now watching this, get them involved, encourage them. Because again, the camaraderie that we built as, as students was amazing. It was great. And again, like I said, it was my, my best memories were part of that. So I hope that someone from the staff does step up and offer to volunteer. I think that the, the building also happens with the, the coach, right? So kids have coaches to go to when they have concerns or thoughts, and the relationships are so very important. But thank you again for coming up and bringing that to my attention, our attention. I did see the video and I was surprised that our band was that small right now. And, you know, as you say, the color guard. So, thank you.
And it's open from 7th grade to 12th grade. So all the kids are very social together and they have created a very nice bond, including our color guard. So it's, it's a really nice group.
All repeated so they can hear. 7th grade through 12th grade.
Yes.
Because years ago, it was just 9th through 12th.
This is not appropriate. Okay.
Actually, just these comments here triggered something. The last meeting we had, there was a comment made by somebody in the public about one of our teaching staff at the middle school moving to the high school and claiming that person isn't properly certified to teach physics. So I'd like you to clarify that for our staff. I was a little upset to hear that. I wasn't at the meeting here. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to come, but I didn't think it was appropriate for that person to be speaking about our staff in that manner. But if you could explain kind of how that certification works and the process with that, that would be great.
Sure. So we do have somebody who's moved from the middle school up to the high school to teach physics, and he is, he is certified. So he is, he's able to teach us. What happened is, I think way back as far as like 2006, the NJEA helped found an organization called the Center for Teacher and Learning through New Jersey. And what it is, is it's a program to address the major shortages we have in STEM teachers throughout the state and the nation, really. And so what it is, is it's a, it's almost like an alternate route program for any licensed teacher to get additional licenses. So they offer mostly STEM. So they have, it's called the Progressive Science Initiative. You can get your physics, your chem, your bio, your physical sciences cert, or a CATA V math, or a middle school science, or a middle school math cert. And so what happened, you know, it's really hard to find physics teachers, but we have some really good teachers in the district. And so we, one of our teachers was interested in pursuing this as an additional certification. So he started last year with this program. It's a 34-credit Master of Science in Teaching and Learning Physics program. And he did all of the coursework already, which means he's in the phase now where he concurrently teaches at least one class of physics and gets his credential at the end of the year. So it's very much like an alternate route, somebody who has a master's degree in something and, you know, we hire them and they go through a program simultaneously while they're teaching. We think it's a great idea because we know that we have very strong teachers here, and especially in science, it's so specific, your credential. If you are chem certified, you cannot teach physics. If you are physics certified, you can't teach bio. So it's a really nice way to, to get them much more well-rounded and do this. And so yes, absolutely, he is, he is certified to teach what he's teaching.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that. Because I know that, you know, you and Dr. Charleston have worked very hard to make sure all our teachers have the proper certs and are, and they are getting the proper certs in that manner that you've described. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. I think it's very good for our physics department as well. Anything before we adjourn? All right. A motion to adjourn. Scarpelli, seconded by Mr. Hayward. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.